And everything in Inglewood possibly could go to short-term rentals because they can make a lot more money than long-term rentals. So I do not think that it will help the affordability of property in Inglewood. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We thought developers are going to come running in when we approved ADUs and scraping lots and putting up homes with ADUs too, and that hasn't happened at all. Matter of fact, it seems like there's almost no interest. I would like to, I don't think we let you know, but on Wednesday, the city is hosting with the Metro Mayor's Caucus, we're hosting in terms of our building is being used, for a workshop on ADUs all morning for half a day, and you can come to part of it. And the guy who wrote the book on this that is really looking at how ADUs can help revitalize neighborhoods and do a number of things, he's thinking way outside the box. So I would like to sort of, I don't care which way we go tonight, it's written, it's written not having, or it's written having them right now. I may come back Monday night next week and insist that they be, that we use them again, based on what I hear there and some things that I've been trying to study around this. I do think that we have to be really careful about deciding that some people overbought their house or something, and therefore they shouldn't be allowed to use their ADU to make money so that they can stay in place. Some of them did that with that, and mine not understanding. But I do, I do, I mean, I was one of those who wanted ADUs for affordability, and I didn't see the flip side of affordability at that time. But I'm fine leaving it the way it is. Member Anderson?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you're wanting to leave it in for now, but, okay.
Yeah, well, right now, right now, it's being left in as a possibility, that's what Planning and Zoning said, right? But I'm open to it being an amendment on Monday night to take it out.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that on anything, right?
Sure.
So, member Questa.
So what was the support on that? Are we three and three?
I think, I think we were, and I was deciding, I think we, well, maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
Did you weigh in, member Stone, on that?
I did not, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm listening, and I really appreciate all of the arguments and whatnot.
Thank you, member Questa.
So, yeah, I'm kind of of two minds on it still, to be honest with you. Part of it is that I do believe that, you know, ADUs were passed for the purposes of long-term rentals, and I don't believe that using them as STRs is going to increase long-term rental stock, because it's obviously the opposite case. The flip side of that is, it doesn't sound like the intent behind ADUs was for them to be used as long-term rentals to non-family members. It sounds like they were intended to be used by family, is the way that it was described, for, you know, a child of an aging resident to move into the primary home and essentially what are termed, you know, mother-in-law houses in the backyard, essentially. Am I correct in that assessment?
Yes, you are. And you know what? I'm going to make this easy on it. I'm going to say, let's take it out, because that was the original intent when we set it back to Planning and Zoning, and they didn't send it back to us, they left it in. So I'm going to go with what we all asked them to do, and take it out. And then if I feel like, if any of us feels like after Wednesday, we want to say amendment to this, want to put it back in, then let's do it. Let's move on.
Yep, that sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you, member Questa, for asking that, because I pushed it a little further. And anything else under dash?
You asked me to remember to bring back.
Yes, but the parking, thank you.
Yep.
Parking.
So five dash thirty-one dash three, it was section nine. So about signs, so I'm suggesting we include the specificity of where these signs should be posted. And I think, Mayor, you, maybe someone suggested, maybe they're not only posted on doors?
I'm sorry, I'm fine with them being on doors, but I think that's fine. I was talking about parking, I thought you were talking about parking. Yes, it's not to forget parking, so when you, I'm fine with the signs being where they are on the door. If we hear from providers that, you know what, actually, there's even better places.
Oh, I beg your pardon, add locations of parking, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, good. It's not late yet.
I know.
Parking, what do you, what do you want here? What changes do folks want, if any? Member Protem?
I'd just like staff to just clean up that language. To me, I read it one way, member Questa read it another way, so just understanding what it is that we're trying, or how many parking spaces a single STR would have off-street is what I need to understand.
Is that enough for everyone to feel like they got?
The clarity will go a long way.
Okay. It's, it's, two people, seven people read this, so it's really good, we're all up here. All right. So then moving on to five dash thirty-one dash five, special conditions and restrictions. Anything there?
Um.
Sorry. Member Stone?
Uh, so...
There's A through K on this one.
Yeah.
Might be under life safety if it...
Yeah, I think it is, through K, change of ownership. Come back to me, I'll find it, I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have anything under this section?
Dash five?
No. This is under special conditions and restrictions of the short-term license. Member Questa?
Yes, is it, what is the, oh, I'm embarrassed here, what is the additional tax that we place on these boarding taxes?
Are you talking about city taxes?
Yes.
Accommodation tax.
Accommodation.
Are you asking the staff for how much it is?
Yes, the sales tax, and what's the other licenser pulling?
Lodging tax.
Lodging, thank you, sir. Just doing a quick survey, I think ours is at 2%.
Both of them are 5.5. I think one is 3, and the other's 2.5.
I was thinking two. Let's call it two. I was just doing some surrounding cities, Denver's at 10. Most are well over 5 on surrounding cities. I don't think we answered this tonight, but something I'd like to review. Airbnb makes 3% service charge. We're getting less than Airbnb off these, and I think that the city should do better than that. Thank you. Probably another conversation, but certainly I'd like to raise when the time comes along. Thank you.
Member Stone, are you going to follow up on that same thing?
Yeah, actually, he found the thing I was looking for. So I believe my conversation with Sean at the last time that we met, whenever that was, you said that we would have to refer that to a ballot measure, is that correct? So that's something that we should look to do once we're done with this.
Thank you. And part of the reason why it's so low is that we really don't have major hotels, whereas Denver and everyone else does, so we're talking about small-time motels, but this might be a very good thing. Good time to reconsider it. So, member Questa, I'll be looking for you to bring that forward.
And I'll second it for you.
Anything else on this? Member Stone, did you find what you were looking for? Was that it?
That was, that was it, yeah.
Okay, great. We're on to five dash thirty-one dash six, posting of life safety information. All right, nothing there to add. Five dash thirty-one dash seven, revocation termination, surrendering of business licenses. Member Stone?
So this is again where I was asking about a permanent revocation. I don't know that necessarily, I feel that any three violations warrants permanent revocation, but I'd like to see some kind of language that provides for us to, you know, make an assessment as to whether or not they're going to be permanently revoked of the license, because if it was like, I don't know, some really minor violation three times in a row, and they get suspended for 18 months, and they correct that minor violation, and then, you know, then sure, give them another chance a year and a half later, but if it's like major issues happening repeatedly, then I don't want them to continue operating.
Member Questa?
I agree. And I'm not sure, maybe the hard line of 18, that's it, or excuse me, three violations, and you're pulled, and then there's no way back in, but if we have a real problem house, and I imagine the neighbors are going to be aware of it, we let that person back in after 18 months, I think they're going to say, what the heck are you doing, council? And God forbid, they get pulled twice, and then come back in a third time. I think we just look derelict in what we're supposed to be doing here. So I'm not sure how we craft that language, but I think that there should be an option for a permanent revocation.
Member Wink?
I suggest the city of Inglewood reserves the right to blah, blah, blah. And I almost want to also suggest, so I'm thinking of the case of Ms. Williams, Williamson, I'm also thinking of adding language that doesn't lock us into three times. So if something absolutely egregious happens once, do we have to wait till a third offense? So I'm interested in what the rest of council thinks, but I think we should allow ourselves some flexibility there, thinking of extremely bad cases.
I'd like to weigh in on this one. I do think there are cases where perhaps, let's say, there's two major drug violations in two different times, and going to a third, I would want to say, you know, there's some serious stuff here, I don't want to wait for a third on that one. And I don't know what we would decide, but it might be some sort of an appellate, or not appellate, but I don't know what it would be, but some kind of filtering language that said, this has become really, really difficult, could we consider another alternative way to deal with this? Member Stone?
I mean, maybe it's just may have three violations, and we may, you know, it may be decided after any one of those violations that there's a revocation.
Or point of information?
Go ahead.
Or a maximum of three violations?
There you go, yeah.
So it says we're going up to three before more than, you know, permanent revocation, but up to allows flexibility before you get to three, maybe?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Everybody feel good about that? Mayor?
Actually, I would like the city attorney to weigh in on that.
Thank you. So I'm taking notes and processing it in my brain, and exactly what that looks like right at the moment, I have no idea, but I will come back with something.
Anything else under this five dash thirty-one dash six? All right, five dash thirty-one dash seven, no, that's it, sorry, that was seven, we're on to eight. Enforcement. Five dash thirty-one dash eight. Member Anderson?
Is this the section where, where Councilmember Questa had the issue with the may and the shall?
With the what?
With the may and the shall issue with...
Yes.
Which one was it?
It's B three, Roman numeral six, includes the shall.
Okay. I, I do feel like this is overly complicated, and I don't know, I would just like to, I have a hard, I've had a hard time following what exactly the steps are. I don't know, I guess I would just like our, to see if our city attorney would be, if she has advice that we could go through this and simplify it, and make it just as effective, and clarify some of those may and shall issues and that kind of thing.
I'd be happy to go through it and see if I can shorten it up a couple of steps, and also to make sure that the may and shall language isn't in conflict, or isn't, even if it's not in conflict, doesn't read like it's in conflict. So even if you hadn't mentioned that, I was planning on reading through that. So if you want to make that one of your directives, that we, see if we can shorten the steps up on this, I'm happy to do so.
Does that work for you, member Anderson?
That works for me.
Member Questa, is that all in line with what you're thinking?
Sounds great, thank you.
Anything else in this section? Member Russell?
I just want to make sure that our case for enforcement is airtight, because the bottom line, that is the issue that we have had all along. Can it be enforceable? But the truth is, part of the problem is, even if it's enforceable, are we going to enforce it? But I want it so airtight that, did the city manager have something he would like to say?
Well, only if you want my commitment that we will absolutely enforce this ordinance if passed.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other parts of this section? All right, how about section two itself, which is just wrapping up this whole thing? Don't see anything?
Two is boilerplate, it just goes in every single ordinance.
It does, doesn't it? Yep. Were any questions about, all right. What I'd like to do next is what I think member Russell brought up in the beginning. I didn't want Planning and Zoning's thing to determine what we're reacting to. We sent stuff back to them, they came back with what they wanted to do. I wanted us to decide what we're going to do. Let's go back, though, to their four things, five things, and decide what we want to do.
Actually, a point of information, Mayor, just before we move forward, do we have to go back to the definitions?
Ah, we do.
Member Russell brought that up in terms of ADUs, do we need to direct staff to also, next to ADUs, just showed, an accessory dwelling unit is not permissible for an STR, so down on those lines. And I believe there was something else under maybe five thirty-one two or five thirty-one three that also stated that, but do we need to make that clear?
We need something...
City Attorney?
Five dash thirty-one dash four, subsection D, which will be renumbered, we won't have little letters, but we'll go to numbers, subsection D, which will be D three, it's currently DC, for parcels containing ADUs, the primary resident may not obtain a STR permit, so that's specifically where it's going to state. We won't put it up in the definitional section at some point in the future, because you will have the ability to come back and review how this applies. I think it's easier if we don't put rules in definitional sections.
Sounds great, thank you.
Mayor, member Russell, is there more, or no?
That answered my question.
Okay, great. Member Anderson?
Well, I don't know when the time, time to bring this up, but I wanted us to talk about the possibility of allowing an exceptions process to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals or something like that. Is there interest in that?
Good, I'm glad we're doing that before we look at, yeah, so I'm interested in that, and particularly because my district is so involved in providing this, but I know it spans into other districts, and I don't know that it matters to the geography of it, but I particularly, if we were just to focus on one, would be working with Craig Hospital, I don't know if Swedish, but Craig in particular, to figure out what their needs are. We have left them out in this process, they've kind of known what's going on, but they didn't think it would impact them, but now they realize it does. So I would find that helpful, if we could come up with some way to address that. I don't want to hold this up for that, but I do want to see if there is language we can put in this that allows for some kind of appellate process, or wavering around care and life of, I don't know what the words would be, health and whatever, I'm interested in that as well. Member Stone, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, so my geographic solution was really just one idea, but I think you guys are actually getting more to the heart of the issue that I was concerned with, with what you're suggesting now, so.
Member Questa?
But as we've come across in a lot of the appeals we've seen, I think a lot of these get subjective, and I think the more specific we can be on who is granted exceptions, the better, and this is something people can just kind of fish their way through and find a way to not have owner occupancy. Thank you. So is that a conversation for a different time, when we would actually hammer out the details? That's not this evening, if I'm understanding correctly.
I think we'd have to have this at another time, we don't know enough at this point.
Here's the, here's the nice thing, if, if at any point you want to amend these regulations, all you have to do is direct staff to go amend them. Because they'll fall into Title V, there's no taking it back to P and Z, they've, they've given you a great starting place, but, but now it won't fall under P and Z. So if you want to direct us to bring back some waiver language immediately, we'll have something back to you in your revision on the February 3rd. If you would like for us to wait and let, let this go through as it's currently written, and then direct us to come back with waiver language, we can do that as well. We're just wanting to do what, what works for you as a council.
So do you want her to come back with waiver language? Member Wink?
February 3rd is a few days ago, so I say yes, please.
You would like waiver language?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would like waiver language, just for the simple fact of just seeing what that would look like, so, and we could discuss it then.
Member Stone?
And following on to what member Questa said, I'd like for that language to be specific to STR owners that are providing the majority of their services to the medical campus in general. I don't know that it needs to be specified between Craig and Swedish, but just simply that my purpose in wanting this kind of waiver is specifically for the STRs that are addressing.
Point of information?
That.
Go ahead, member Wink.
I agree with the thought, member Stone, but I don't agree with majority of, or I'd like to see that defined a little bit more. So for catering to the hospital-related community, where, why exclude some?
We heard some other cases that were similar, that are not necessarily, yeah. Member Questa?
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Because if somebody provides that service to one person for three days out of the year, I don't believe that they need, that they merit a waiver. But if the primary focus of their STR is to provide that service to the hospital, then I would like for them to be able to provide that benefit, because I do think that if we make it, if at any time you provide service by happenstance to someone who is a family member of a patient or a patient at Craig, then I do think it provides a very wide door for people to walk through.
I respectfully disagree, based on the public hearing testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Questa's next.
Yeah, I think that that's a good example of, the details are going to say a lot there. So in addition to the language of what would constitute the exemption, will it include the process as well? What you're going to draft, city attorney, who would be considering that, and just how somebody would go about applying for such?
Absolutely. And by your charter, it would, the appeal would go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeal.
Very good, thank you.
Member Anderson?
I was bringing this up, I wasn't interested, I mean, I had the, the medical thing was one idea in the back of my mind, but I think there may be other exceptions, and I'm happy to let the city attorney return that, and if we, if there are, you know, the language in there that we don't agree with, but I would like to see it a little more expansive, and then we can narrow it down, you know, if we, but I want to see a little more than just exceptions for medical, I don't know, I don't even know what that would look like, but I would like to ask for a little more broad possibilities there.
Member Questa?
So should we weigh in on if we want it just medical exceptions, or broader than that as well? Or should we see what comes back?
Sure, let's hear from you on down.
Well, can you give an example beyond a medical exception of what would fall into something you would consider?
Well, I think the, thank you, yeah, I think one, one of the cases that we heard about here was this, this couple that had the son with the autistic situation. So it's still kind of a medical situation, but I don't know if it's hospital-specific and those kind of things, things where it's, it's, you know, maybe good for the life and safety of a specific family or community, that kind of thing.
Sure, thank you. And that was an extremely compelling case that they had there. I like limiting it to medical myself. Now, maybe it can be a broader medical, that would include scenarios such as that, so that's probably where I would lean towards. Thank you.
Could I offer another idea? Would be if you've got a three-plex, and someone lives in one of them, and they own all three, and so the one next to your three-plex or triplex is asking for one. So that would be another one, I think I could, I mean, we have people up here like that as well, so, and it wouldn't be all three owner-occupied, but, member Wink?
How broad is this medical consideration? Because, you know, we have an operator that is no longer able to work because of rheumatoid arthritis, so it's medical, and uses STRs to maintain an income and a living. Is that medical enough?
But lives somewhere else.
Or may at times live on the properties, but yeah, certainly in Inglewood and close by, or on properties. I mean, you know, how far are we, who are we really excluding here? I want whatever we decide to work for the community, and for as much of the community as possible.
I'm going to keep going with member Russell, because I was going to come on down the line.
So, one thing I would like to make sure is that when we do these waivers, that there are certain things that cannot be waived, like the owner-occupied or the primary residence. I think, so right now, are we just talking about medical, or?
I actually think we are talking about wavering those kinds of things. So it'd be like the case that we heard with the parents trying to provide something for us, so that is what we're asking them to bring forward. In what cases, what would be the process if we wanted to allow for something really unusual to happen, in order to allow for people to utilize this market, this economy, to make it work for them? Which is really different than 10 years ago. So, I mean, you would vote it up or down, really?
Right, I suppose I would like to limit it to medical, but I also want to be very careful that there are certain things that are non-negotiable in that.
Well, and for you, it'd probably be owner-occupied anyway.
Well, that's one of them, yes.
Yeah. Member Wink? I'm going to come back down, all the way down, okay?
So, I want to be more flexible than just medical, depending on what the language looks like, and I'm a little more flexible, again, and based on where there are problem areas in our city, and where there have been existing operators that weren't problem areas, and they weren't owner-occupied, which was the majority. I mean, I'm looking at the numbers. If fewer had problems, and maybe not 100% of them weren't owner-occupied, then why are we punishing the owner-occupied, or the non-owner-occupied that were performing very well, and respectfully, and ably?
So you're open to language that's a little broader?
Yes.
I am too. Want to see it, want to see what it would look like.
Yeah, I want to, I want to see it, yeah.
Member Stone?
So I guess, you know, because my focus was on, you know, initially this geographic kind of concept, maybe I kind of got a little bit of tunnel vision there. I am open to seeing what language around that would look like, because again, you know, I do know of the two cases that member Wink has now cited, and I do think that that's a pretty valid argument. So I'd be open to seeing what broader language would look like. I do believe that we are talking about specifically waiving the owner-occupied, and I don't know that I'd be open to waiving much of anything else, because all of the rest of it is in terms of licensing, and safety, and regulation around, you know, collecting taxes and stuff like that. I think that all of that needs to stay, that none of that would ever be waived. But, yeah.
Great. Mayor Protem?
Same here, I would like to see additional language for medical, but I agree, I think when we're talking about a waiver, it's going to be the primary residents and potentially STRs, because those were the two big items, not the inspection or anything like that, but that's what we're waiving.
And I would like to add one piece to it, that it would, it would definitely show, if we were to have this language, that it doesn't transfer to the next person who owns a home, and I think that's part of this anyway, but just making it really clear that, that that kind of exception doesn't go with the house. Member Stone?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that I also think that it would probably need to have some kind of financial component to cover the cost of additional enforcement.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. So maybe there's some other models of how much more it costs to do something with that kind of unusual. Okay, great. All right, so could we go back to, and we're almost done, to, it's actually page four in your hard copy, I guess it's maybe, I don't know, one, two, through four, or something even on our, in your electronic, that gives the December 3rd, Planning and Zoning, a vote of seven to zero, voted to recommend the following language amendments of the existing, can we go through these, A through E?
What page was it?
It's...
It's three.
Three.
Page three, okay, it's, it's four on this, because it's a, the agenda was on the front of it, that's why. Threw it off one page. So the first one, that the previously identified and practicing short-term rentals be grandfathered as has been a long-term practice of the city. This one seems easy, member Anderson?
I think we're getting at the spirit of that by, with Mayor Protem Sierra's suggestion that we continue to allow them in the places where they have been operating legally. I don't think we can grandfather something that has been illegal, and then when it comes legal, we're, so I think we've been pretty clear that that's not really possible or a good idea at all, but the ones that have been operating legally within those legal areas, I think they should be grandfathered in, and by allowing them to continue operating without the primary residency, I think that gets at that, the spirit of what they were suggesting, at least.
So could I add one piece to this, that they have to come in compliance with, they still have to go through the process of applying to be one, that they become part of our whole database, and we know what primary contacts and all of that are, right? Is that what everybody wanted? Okay, so, and then B, staff's recommendation be adopted to include that a bed and breakfast use be synonymous with a short-term rental. We kind of have taken this and said yes, right?
I think we said no.
Said no. I'm sorry, we said, we said no, and that we were going to deal with it differently, right? Come back to it separately. Okay, great, that, yes, thank you.
Wait, that wasn't...
Point of information, I believe we said yes, that we were going to keep it as is.
Keep the bed and breakfast in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep bed and breakfast as part of short-term rentals.
Right, yeah.
I have a little tick mark on this, it tells me, yep, we did.
Okay.
All right, and we can always change, remember? The accessory dwelling units be permitted. We're saying no, at this point.
Correct.
And then, yeah. D, the revised short-term rental text amendments include the enforcement section agreed by section agreed by Planning and Zoning Office and reviewed by, no, that we've already separated, right? Isn't that what that's saying?
That's correct.
Oh, oh, no. Am I reading this wrong? City Attorney, what do you think D means?
Oh.
I know you didn't write it. I don't know.
Mayor Protem?
I was just going to say, what we decided tonight was that we were going to separate the two from?
I think that's what it's about, too.
From tonight, so, we have two bills.
I think you're right. Member Anderson?
I, I thought that, that this recommendation was in response to when it was sent to, before my time on council, was sent to them, council asked them to provide more enforcement language, they provided that in CB 47, we split it, so we are keeping the language. I think we're saying yes to this in a roundabout way, or we're, we're saying yes, in, in terms of the spirit of it, at least, even though we're splitting it into two different things, we're keeping the enforcement language in there.
And a big thanks to them for helping, and I know it was not an easy thing, they came up with a lot of stuff that needs to be tweaked as we go, but, and then E, our wonderful, city council instructs staff to send a letter of apology, I say no to that. I apologized in the way that it was short, in, in terms of, we didn't know when it was going out, how the process was, that I can apologize, saying we should have been better on our game with this, but we sent letters that were intended in the process of what we decided. Member Anderson?
Again, I think, in keeping with the spirit of this, and I really do want to, you know, take their recommendations seriously, not that we're going to go with every one of them, but I think the idea here was that, that we, the message we're getting in this particular recommendation is that our, we made a mistake in sending out those letters, and figuring out a way to rectify that. I think we've done that by putting, putting a pause on that, and I think we're, if there were, and the other thing I would add to that, if anybody got a letter erroneously, like they were operating in a legal zone, or they were operating a short-term rental for more than 30 days, I don't know if we can find that out at this point, but I do think they should get an apology letter in keeping with the spirit of this, if we sent one out for somebody who was operating legally. I don't know if there were any of those, but?
There were, there were four.
I think those should get an apology letter, just to, to, to keep in the spirit of what this, this is all about, and, and because we sent those wrong, that should be corrected. It doesn't have to be, you know, falling on our knees to apologize, but say, we sent you this letter in error, and correct that.
I was taking notes, so I know lights went on, I don't know when.
In order.
Questa?
Yeah, I've got two parts to this. The first being that I believe this was outside the scope of P and Z's duties, and I'll go ahead and read this to you. The commission shall hear applications for amendments, modifications, or revisions of zoning ordinances, shall forward such applications to the council with its recommendations therein. This is not an ordinance, this has nothing to do with regulations, so I think this was outside their purview to begin with. Secondly, no, this is an ordinance on the book, we took an oath to uphold it, no, we should, we should not be apologizing for that. It's preposterous, frankly, but thank you.
Thank you. Member Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think an apology letter, I say no to that. However, I think we have an opportunity here to clarify, I, I think it's not a bad idea, to sort of meet in the middle. And I agree with what Mr. Questa said, but I think we maybe can send some communication that, whose aim is to clarify, reiterate, thank for their business, but reiterate what's coming, I don't know, something, some piece of communication, but not necessarily a clear, straight apology.
Member Stone?
So I actually agree with Member Anderson's suggestion on sending an apology letter to people who received this, who should not have, because they were operating illegal STR in a zone that has been zoned for that. However, I'm also in agreement with Member Wink and Member Questa, that this is not within the purview of P and Z to suggest that we make apologies, they're supposed to suggest ordinances and language and stuff like that. And I also do not think that it's our responsibility to apologize for informing people operating illegal businesses within the city, that they are operating an illegal business, and to cease and desist.
Mayor Protem?
And I disagree with sending anything out. Obviously, when we decided back in October, or I disagree with that, with an apology, just the fact that when we decided this in October, you know, short-term rentals were illegal. To me, it's just, if you violate code, you receive a notice from the city. We didn't violate your due process, you still have the ability to fight it, so I don't think it warrants this. So anybody that violates code within the city does receive a notice from the city, so I just don't agree that an apology is needed.
Member Anderson, then I'm going to wrap this up.
I'm just wondering, if Councilmember Stone agreed with my suggestion, at least, to send it to people who got them erroneously, was that, is that something we could weigh in on and see if others would, would like to do that?
To be honest, my hunch right now is those four people really don't care whether we apologize in a letter, they would really like us to set this and get going, and let's get it done. I think, fine, if you want to send them a letter. I think that what it does for me is it, it sends a red flag that we had a very unusual circumstance of this, and I, I had people on one side blaming us for sending it out purposefully to try and get everybody out for the public eating, or meeting. I didn't even know it was going out at that time, and the fact that I didn't know it was going out at that time is more problematic to me. And I think Member Anderson said last week, or the week before, that Planning and Zoning caught the first heat of this. They all showed up en masse there, and they heard, and you know, it's way different when you're sitting here, than when you're watching on TV of what it really feels like, and I think they got the brunt of it, and I'm sure it raised their, you know, how many meetings have they had? A gazillion. And so it's frustrating to them, I don't want to frustrate them further, but I just say no to this, and let's move on, and let's give these four homes and everyone else the right thing, and move forward on this stuff.
Done with that?
Anybody want to say that and send Kraft a letter? You could bring it Monday night and say, here it is. All right, okay, is there anything else we've left out? It seems like Member Russell had something, I keep thinking we were putting in a parking lot. Did we? Did we have them all?
I, I think it came, just a second.
Might have been the ADUs.
I think it was the ADUs, and, and I didn't weigh in on the letter. I absolutely do not think that we should send a letter of apology, and I, it is staff's job to enforce the law, and I absolutely agree that it was overreaching for P and Z to deal with, to deal with that, because they are to deal with land use, and they were never, staff brought it to city council about enforcing the law, and that is our job. And so I think, I, I agree, it's probably because they got the brunt of, of what happened, but still, when you have a board, they should understand what the scope of their job is. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, I think there's some great things happening around that, so I think well taken. Anything else from this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close this special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All right, it was Member Stone, and then Mayor Protem. Please vote. Oh, Member Questa?
Yes, I do still have concerns regarding STRs, but this was a really good conversation. I appreciate everybody taking the extra, shoot, two hours, or excuse me, hour that we overshot, so I'm going to support, we'll see what language comes back, and I thought this was very productive tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and thank you for doing that. I would appreciate any feedback about how we went about it. I think at the beginning, it was not quite clear, and that probably could have been communicated differently. I think we were trying to figure it out today with the city attorney, trying to figure out what's legal, what isn't, how can we go through this quickly, so I welcome any feedback. Please vote.
This is on?
Oh, Manager Lewis.
I'm so sorry, but before we vote on the adjournment, I need to let you know that about 15 minutes ago, I was informed that our live stream went down earlier in the meeting, and so we are, have been recording, and it's, we're going to check to see if we actually recorded, but just lost the live stream. We'll try to let you know as soon as possible. We have put the audio recorded, and we will upload that. I sincerely apologize for anyone that's been watching at home.
Was there something else down here that I missed? Thank you for alerting us to that. Is it up and running for our next meeting?
No.
No, okay. All right, please vote to adjourn this meeting.
All votes have been cast, let the record show, seven ayes.
Great, we'll meet next door, let's, let's give ourselves 10 minutes, okay, so like six oh, I mean, eight oh, like seven, let's be back in there. And there are meals over there, so you can definitely eat while we study.
And thanks to staff for hanging out so long.
Yeah, I'm dying.
Me too.